Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to this Tuesday, October seventeenth, 2023 workshop session. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam President. Everyone is here and accounted for except Dr. B., who took a small fall. And will hopefully be, is here in spirit.
Thank you. All right, will you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, we were teasing about, and you did it first, Emily, so I get to say it about how we took fall break literally. Very cute. So, yes, we sent him well wishes. Before we get started tonight, we do have a special guest in the audience. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. We wanted to recognize actually a former employee of Carmel Clay Schools, Mrs. Peggy Reeves, who passed away recently on September the twenty-fourth at age of ninety-three. And I knew Peggy, or we have known Peggy for at least twenty years as our neighbor across the street. And which is how I first met Peggy. I had no idea that she taught for the school district. I eventually learned that she did, and she was a kindergarten teacher. And then I eventually learned that she was the first kindergarten teacher in Carmel. And so, and in two thousand twelve, we had recognized her with a superintendent's recognition. But I, we wanted to make a few comments this evening. So many people in the community may not know Peggy, but those old-time Carmel residents, many of them would know Peggy. And so, as I said, she was the first kindergarten teacher for Carmel Clay Schools. She started her teaching career in Carmel, at the Carmel Kindergarten in nineteen sixty-two, where classes were held at the Old Christian Church located on the side of our current library. Once kindergarten was approved and funded by the state of Indiana, Peggy was hired by Carmel Clay Schools on August twenty-seven, nineteen sixty-four, to teach at College Wood Elementary. That was the old College Wood Elementary School. She was awarded the Outstanding Elementary Educator Award in nineteen seventy-six, and as I noted, also the Superintendent's Award in twenty-twelve. She taught hundreds of kindergarteners over her career prior to her retirement in June of nineteen ninety. She was a very passionate teacher and mentor who loved her students and respected, was very respected by her peers, many of which are here this evening, as well as some of her family members. And so, just want to take this opportunity to recognize Peggy.
Thank you so much. Thank you guys so much for being here. She sounded like a very remarkable woman, and we are all better for it.
She was.
Thank you. We will now move on to the consent items for the evening. May I have a motion to approve consent?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving consent, please signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. I apologize, I forgot to ask if there was any discussion. Are we good? Okay. We will now move on to the action item for tonight, which is the approval of the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-five contract between the Board of Trustees of Carmel Clay Schools and the Carmel Teachers Association, which is very exciting. Dr. O.
Well, good evening, President Browning, members of the board. I'm very excited tonight to present for your approval, the twenty-twenty-three to the twenty-twenty-five teachers' contract. On September twenty-eighth, we presented to the School Board of Trustees a public meeting, and we discussed those terms of the tentative agreement. Shortly thereafter, on September twenty-ninth, the Carmel Teachers Association did ratify through the teachers the tentative agreement. And so, this evening, we're coming to have our contract ratified by the school board to share some of the updates to the contract for twenty-three to twenty-five. Is a three percent salary increase in the first year, a two percent salary increase plus increment for the second year. That, the increment is also part of the first year. We did update some language items as well with regards to insurance enrollment dates, personal leave language, retirement notification dates, and then also some return from leave language. We added a stipend for our secondary teachers to cover classes when a substitute teacher is not available. And then also, we added some ECA stipends, esports, a head coach, an assistant coach, the cyber patriot sponsor, the elementary bus supervision, as well as our Health Occupation Services of America sponsor. I want to take a moment to thank President of the Carmel Teachers Association, Mark Wiene, Vice President Jill Grimes, who are in attendance with us today. Carmel Clay Schools has an outstanding relationship with our Carmel Teachers Association. We collaborate on a very high level. I want to thank also Mr. McMichael for his work during negotiations this year. And at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I got Greg. Second for Greg. Discussion? All right. No discussion. I'll, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor of approving the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-five contract between the Board of Trustees of Carmel Clay Schools and the Carmel Teachers Association, please signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries five to zero. Congratulations to our teachers. Well deserved. All right, we will now move on to our hearings tonight. At this time, I'm going to suspend the regular board meeting and open up three public hearings to allow for public input regarding the proposed twenty-twenty-four budgets, twenty-twenty-four capital projects plan, and the twenty-twenty-four bus replacement plan. On September eleventh, Mr. McMichael presented the proposed twenty-twenty-four budgets, twenty-twenty-four capital projects, and the twenty-twenty-four bus replacement. The board did discuss these and authorized the administration to advertise for these hearings. Mr. McMichael, would you like to make any comments before we invite members of the public to offer input?
Yes, this is the opportunity for members of the public to comment on the budgets if they so choose. And so, at this point, we would invite any interested members to make any comments that they would like.
Thank you. At this time, I will open a hearing on the twenty-twenty-four budgets. If you would like to speak, you will head and walk to the dais and offer members of the public an opportunity to make comments. Hearing none, I will close this hearing on the twenty-twenty-four budgets and open a hearing regarding the twenty-twenty-four capital projects plan and offer members of the public an opportunity to make comments. Hearing none, I will close this hearing on the twenty-twenty-four capital projects plan and open a hearing regarding the twenty-twenty-four bus replacement plan and offer members of the public an opportunity to make any comments. Hearing none, I will close this hearing on the twenty-twenty-four bus replacement plan and reconvene the pub, the regular board meeting. Thank you. We are now going to move on to our workshop topic of the night. I do want, we're going to kind of change things a little bit. Guests that are here, we would love for you to stay tonight. We're going to talk about data privacy. But if you have fun, exciting plans, feel free to head out and do all of those things. And we are so thankful that you were here with us tonight. All right, Mrs. Cloud, it's all you when you're, when you're ready.
Thank you. Members of the board, Dr. Ostrom, Dr. Dudley, and Mr. McMichael, thank you for inviting us here tonight to talk with you about digital safety and data privacy here at Carmel Clay Schools. Tonight, we're going to be doing things in a little bit different manner than we have done before. We're going to be using a tool today as, that we, as a technology team, use to help us prepare for cybersecurity incidents. This activity is called a tabletop, and it's essentially a role-playing game. Think for a moment of mystery in a box, except in this event, it's a cyber incident rather than a murder. We are going to invite you to the table, and we want to emphasize that this is only a simulation, and the events and the activities in this event, and the people and the district involved are all fictitious, and nothing is actually happening. It is just a simulation. So why don't you go ahead and take a moment to join us at the table? You have an assigned seat and a role, and then I'll give you a little bit more information. You do not need your laptop, thank you. But I'm sure you would lock your laptop when you were coming to the, yes. Okay, thank you for joining us. The tabletop tonight is going to take place in two phases, with a pause in between each of the phases in which we'll discuss what has been happening. There are five days in each phase, and you'll have information to read that, and you might potentially choose to share the information that you read with the other members of the team. We encourage you to summarize the information that you read, not actually read your document directly to the rest of the group. We want you to put on your acting hat, have a little bit of fun, and get into character. So you'll notice that you are not serving in your routine role as a member of the board or as a member of the executive team. We've numbered the actions in your guide, so when you open one of your flaps, which you will be directed to do momentarily, you will potentially see that you are number one. If you are number one, you would be the first person to speak, then the second person to speak, and that will just help the conversation flow between the group. We'll take a brief pause at the end of each day before we move on to the next day to see what information you might like to share with each other or what actions you might take in the event that is going to occur. I'm going to join you at the table to help be a facilitator, and Ms. Masterson and Mr. Cronin are going to be your guides today. So what questions might you have for them before we get started? All right, here they come.
Thank you. This is going to be a bit of an adventure.
So we'd like to welcome you to Simulation School District. Again, as, as Christy mentioned, this is entirely simulated. None of the events are actually happening. This is not a war of the world situation. Just want to make that clear when the recording goes out. So to tell you a little bit about this school district, so we have a...
Okay. I might need a handhold. I'll stay here for a minute. So we have about thirty-five hundred students, five hundred and twenty-five staff members. Simulation School District have started work to harden their systems to increase their cybersecurity posture. And they do have a system in place to report suspected phishing and have done some training with staff on how to use it. So what I'd like for you to do now is go ahead and open up your folders if you haven't already. On the left-hand side, you have a short job description of your current role and a couple of tools that you may or may not use in the course of this simulation today. And then there's an additional description of the school district, just to give you some background on your character. Unless you have any questions, we'll go ahead and get started with Phase One. So there are two half-sheets of paper on the right-hand side, one labeled day one through thirty and then forty-five through forty-nine, I believe. So obviously, we're going to start with day one. Go ahead and open up that flap, and you'll read your description. Remember, if you've got the number one, we're going to encourage you to be the first one to share, and feel free to ad lib, summarize, and take on your character.
Okay. It's a busy day at Simulation School District. You and your beloved facility dog are reading a graphic novel about cybersecurity at a summer technology event.
Thank you, Superintendent. What else is going on today?
Simulation School District switched to a new online payroll system over the summer. You are finalizing the training, or I am finalizing the training, for our staff and working with the Communications Director to ensure the website is updated with the new information.
I received an email from the Cybersecurity Infrastructure Security Agency and the Federal Bureau of Investigation that there's been a cyber, or targeted cyber attacks in K-12 educational institutions, so I reported it as phishing and then got an email back that said that it was legitimate.
You receive an email from your cybersecurity partner containing a joint alert from the Cybersecurity Infrastructure Security Agency, CISA, and the Federal Bureau of Investigation, FBI, regarding a rise in cyber attacks targeting K-12 educational institutions. The alert describes cyber criminals' tactics, techniques, and procedures, including phishing, emails, ransomware, remote hacking, distributed denial-of-service attacks, and data exfiltration from schools and distance-learning providers. Cyber threat actors view schools as targets of opportunity, and these attacks are expected to continue through the twenty-three, twenty-four academic year. Here's a thing in bold. I'll read that to you.
You can let, you can let the table know.
Yeah, you can let the table know what's happening.
You are currently out from the office of your daughter, at your daughter's wedding for the next week with no access to your inbox. Great.
I'm at Starbucks with my latte, and I'm typing on my computer with my latte. And I am updating the website with cute little pictures of kids coloring and little pictures of Jim Dandy and typey, typey, typey. You're welcome.
Well, I have just been so busy. I've been co-planning for the back-to-school fundraiser events. I've been running spaces for the upcoming solar eclipse. I have been selling glasses for the solar eclipse. And I've been arranging food trucks and personal comfort stations and even traffic control. Yes, all in the role of the board president. I must.
Well, I've been busy either with the communications background, or my students, or staff, or even with the vice president, or the church.
I'm just so excited because right now I'm getting together all the math professionals and doing a, um, a training on new textbook adoption policies and technology. And it's so exciting, and everyone's just going to be so thrilled with what I'm, we're adopting in this new school year.
That sounds amazing. I bet the teachers are super excited.
So excited.
So anything that you would want to share with the group based on what's happened today on day one? Or that you're able to share with the group?
I would say that there's, I get an email, I got an email back that said it was a legitimate cyber attack concern. And so I probably need to share that with, with all of you, that there are some legitimate concerns that they're targeting specifically K-12 institutions.
I should probably make sure that if I'm at Starbucks that I'm on my VPN.
That's great, yeah. Care in the world. Hope you guys are all doing well.
All right, let's move on to Day Seven. Go ahead and open up your nice flap, and we'll follow the same process.
But then after that, okay.
There is a guide to help you, second, third, fourth, but sometimes you may be able to fear that your team might come and...
Okay.
I'm seven. Oh, I'm one. I'm also a seven out of ten. Yeah, I had a staff member who caused a lot of ruckus, and on the way out of one of our offices was really upset. And so I had to let that person go. And so I just want to make sure that you know that this person has been let go so we can make the appropriate updates in our systems in terms of making sure that they don't have the access to cause additional disruption. And we just need to make sure that our site is updated accordingly too, since this person is no longer employed with us. So we need to come together as a team and have a quick meeting, make sure we take care of that.
I've been composing an email to staff about a situation with a disgruntled employee, encouraging everyone's cooperation in getting the year off to a good start.
I received a call from Mr. McMichael that I needed to disable the staff member's ID badge that had been let go today.
Thank you.
The employee hat made a little bit of a scene, but luckily, our HR director gave me a heads-up that this may be occurring. So I'm now monitoring social media for the fallout of such things and also making sure, I'm working with local news outlets to try to make sure that we're protecting the privacy of said employee while also making sure that false information doesn't get out.
I am just so excited for our board that we have been visiting the classrooms to see the kids implement the first twenty days of technology. And the kids are so engaged, they're so excited what they're doing. They're learning about the safe use of technology as well as being safe digital citizens. And so the students, it's just exciting to be in the classrooms and be able to see our great kids and teaching them how to be, use digital technology in the correct way. Very exciting.
President Dudley, I want to thank you for recognizing that because my team and I have been hard at work making sure both the staff and our students understand how to be good digital citizens. So thank you for recognizing.
And it is definitely showing. It is showing the work that we saw. I'll pass on that.
Yeah, I was also in those classrooms. However, I did get a text message and had to step out. So I appreciate HR Director Jackson and her communication and the work that the team came together to assist in the scenario.
Mr. Brown, are you still out of the office?
Clearly. I'm out of the office, and I assure you, if I was there, I would disable their user ID, but I'm not. So good luck.
All right, anything that you want to do based on what happened on Day Seven?
Who's Greg's backfill so we can disable the access?
Oh, that's such a great question. We don't have one in Simulation School District.
So fortunately, we worked with the person, another technology employee who does have access, and we were able to loop that person in the communication and take care of it as a district and as a team. So that was outstanding in Greg's absence. And Greg did that ahead of time, and he put that into place because he's an outstanding employee.
I will allow Greg to keep his job.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I also think it's something where, as a communications director, if I am thinking...
If I am thinking that this situation of the employee is going to make the news, I really want to make sure that my board is aware. So I would make sure that my superintendent has looped in the president to make sure that they're aware if anything is going to be on the news.
As facilities director, I have made sure that that staff member no longer has access to our building.
And Mr. McMichael, did you say you did send a communication out to employees to let them know?
I did.
Okay.
Y'all might be too good for this particular tabletop. We're going to move on to Day Nine. Go ahead and open up your flap, and we'll repeat.
All right, there was an urgent email claiming to be from Human Resources instructing employees to update their banking information in E-suite. The email stated that employees who fail to update their information will not receive their next paycheck on time. When users clicked on the email link, it took them to the page that looks like the Simulation School District website and prompted them to log in using their credentials. I received this email, and I deleted it as spam.
And I also received the same email, and I deleted it as spam as well. Well, I just get so many. And now, you know, everybody wants to come to Carmel for the solar eclipse. So it's just really flooding my inbox.
I mean, I've been so busy implementing this new curriculum that I haven't checked my emails in weeks.
Well, I actually do my job, and I have been assisting the HR. I have been assisting the HR department with recruiting bus drivers and substitute teachers, making social media posts, graphics, and updates to the website.
Well, I'm working to backfill this person, so I am partnering with our high school principal to review resumes. And we want to make sure that we keep it confidential, any employees that might be interested in the role that are internal too. So, you know, if you hear word on the street or we're traveling through the grapevine, Greg, don't blab that out.
He's on vacation. He ain't doing anything.
And because of the employee being terminated, we are now short in two different roles in our district. A bus driver and is one of them. And so we're having to rework the bus routes in order to get all of our students to school. So I have been working on making sure that we have a plan to ensure all students get to our facilities.
Are you willing to drive buses in the interim as we have this gap in staff?
Absolutely. I drove this morning. I drove a ride.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And Mr. Brown, are you back in the office yet?
I'm back, but I'm not back.
Oh.
But I'm back. I'm going through emails. I've got five thousand. I thought there'd be more, but it's only five thousand.
It's not too bad after two days or two months.
I hit it, yeah, and I'm plowing through it. I've seen some suspect emails, but I'm hovering over the links to make sure they're not some crazy thing. I get requests from Amazon spelled differently than I normally used to see them spelled. So I'm taking my time and deleting these ones that look suspicious.
Sounds like an excellent strategy.
It is. And I'm going to go talk to my assistant to see what's been going on, if there's any phishing or other nefarious cyber attacks so I can make sure they're all protected, including our students.
Can you remind us again what should we do if we have a suspicious email?
If it's suspicious, you should ask your network administrator to validate it and take it from there.
Yeah, I think that both the school board president and myself, looking back as we're discussing this, we probably should have marked it as phishing, so then the network administrator would have received it right away instead of just deleting it or marking it as spam because it might not pop up on the network administrator's caseload.
That might have been a good idea, but you guys deleted it. It's probably gone to be empty, the trash. It's just like in the, you know, waste bins go out every day, trash goes out in the box every day.
All right, let's move on to day 10.
So I got to start. Select high school teachers are moving to a new technology platform in their classroom and are receiving new devices today. You've instructed technicians to ask teachers to change their new device passwords. Make a note to look into a tool that would allow you, me, to confirm that passwords have indeed been changed.
Today, at the high school, we're moving, certain high school teachers are moving to a new technology platform in their classroom and are receiving new devices today.
I'm currently at the high school taking photos of the device distribution, making sure I'm not taking any pictures of students who have not allowed their pictures to be taken. And we've got some great kids and I also have a new iPhone that I get to use.
Who's paying for that?
My HR director. To keep quiet.
Okay, well, I'm partnering with our curriculum director. We have a staff recruiting trip that we're planning for in a few weeks and so we are in the midst of preparing our promotional materials for that trip.
So excited, we're going to have such a good time.
I'm sure we're going to find some great candidates.
Oh, we are.
Ms. President, are you busy today at all?
Well, I've been working with our fine superintendent here, preparing for our board meeting, but it seems to me that we've had a lot of things going on in our cybersecurity, so I'm wondering if we might not look at some of our policies in that framework for our cybersecurity to determine, do we need to look as a board to say this is the direction we want to set for the district through our policies? And then possibly, because we need to really up our funding for cybersecurity, maybe pass a board resolution so that we can go after some funding for cyber initiatives. And so I'm going to be talking to our superintendent about the possibility of getting those things on the board agenda.
I bet your network administrator would be really impressed with those activities.
I think, yeah, I think he would be.
Indeed. And I've been with the school board president talking about all those things.
Great collaboration.
Facilities director.
Did you have anything going on today?
I did. Was that present?
I was four, so I was...
It was a long time ago.
Okay. I have been really, really busy today, much busier than Ms. Nelson Williams, the curriculum director. We are working on a new HVAC system for the high school, so I've been talking to Mr. McMichael a little bit today. We've met with staff members, engineers and architects trying to make sure that we have the right system and so that we can have some bids.
One thing I will note as communications director who has communication plans, public relations response things, that the cyber thing is not on my radar whatsoever. So there's been nothing shared about, I am ignorant to all of these things, so. Superintendent?
We have to loop some people in and make sure we're all on the same page.
All right, let's go ahead and skip all the way forward to day 30.
So I wanted to let you all know that we did choose our vendor for, we, you know, sent out information for bids for HVAC for the high school and we did choose a vendor, so I'm preparing that to send to Dr. Armstrong.
Thank you. As the school year continues, we have teachers routinely access their email accounts and save student grades and personally identifiable information on their laptops in a cloud-based platform.
Can you send me those names so I can have some conversations? You're number three?
I'm number three. As the school year continues, teachers routinely access their email accounts and save student grades and personally identifiable information on their laptops in a cloud-based platform.
Well, I need to know more about these individuals that need a little coaching, but I'm out on a staff recruiting trip, so I'm not able to access emails with the names of those individuals, so that'll have to be handled when I return to the office.
Yeah, with some of the concerns that have been shared, I'm downtown with the board president. We're attending a town hall on cybersecurity to learn more about how we can strengthen our cybersecurity here in the district.
And we'll definitely bring back the information back to the board to see how we can firm up our security and what protections are out there for us.
I hope the district doesn't send anything out right now because I'm on this recruiting trip and I don't have access to emails.
Speaking of that, if you see any good talent as you're off at these events, could you maybe pass on the fact that we're hiring for some really good roles and...
Recruiting is everyone's responsibility in the district. It has a theme and a message that we share with our leadership.
Thank you.
I'm taking pictures at their conference. On my new iPhone.
Are you posting information about job openings?
I am not and I'm still oblivious to cyber stuff, so.
You know, I would think the communications person is at the conference, she might pick up some things, even if no one's specifically talking with her, she might pick up some things in, while she's taking those pictures of the superintendent and the board president.
Taking pictures is an art, okay?
All-consuming.
I love it that I'm staring at the real person right now.
All right, well, as day 30 comes to an end, we're closing out that first month of school. We're going to pause for a quick discussion. What has gone well over the past 30 days? Are there anything, any things you would do differently now that we've had some events unfold? What questions might you have?
I would think that as a staff member, I would have been alerted once the phishing emails came to everyone's attention. I recognize that our network administrator was on a two-week leave, but it would have been nice to just have somebody say, please don't click on this, some of your colleagues have and it's dangerous to your syst, our systems. So that would be something that, I mean, that's what we kind of talked about at lunch today.
Maybe whoever is filling in.
That person or someone. I would think because that was critical information, bank information.
Maybe HR needs to make sure that people understand their role to create email.
I would hope that we'd be able to have a network administrator person go into the email system and delete that out of everyone's inbox. I don't know if you have that capability there, but...
We do.
That's the best way, you don't have to rely on everyone seeing these things and you may see the old email first, the phishing email before someone says, watch out for web, when you open up.
Oh, good idea.
I'd also like to see us increase our professional development with our staff members and I've also been communicating with the board president of potentially doing a workshop on cybersecurity in the future.
You're really on top of things.
Thank you.
I would like as communications director, if the FBI reaches out, I think that that's something that would have been really nice to have a heads up. Just not, maybe there's no action items along with that, there's nothing for them to do, but I think that information is good that those sorts of things are occurring in the district.
I'd like to hire a network administrator that takes less vacation time.
You know, daughter's weddings, they're kind of...
We don't.
Could we make sure that the communications director understands what's called job destructions?
Yes, we could.
Photos are an art.
All right, well, we are going to move into day 2 now.
Would you guys please open up the next slide? We're going to start with day 45.
Okay, so following our most recent pay date, there's a report from my department that indicates 38 employees did not receive their paychecks, starting with the network administrator. And despite having up-to-date account information in the systems and enabling the direct deposit, we now have an alert that our superintendent will be unhappy with these staff members. Wait, you alert the superintendent, as you know, they will be, they, oh yes. So I've got to work with the superintendent because the staff members will be unhappy because they have not gotten their pay and so I need to work to pull together the payroll team to discuss how we can mitigate this issue.
Well, the first thing I think we would do is take care of those employees and get them paid immediately, whether that's on a separate check or later in the day so that they receive their appropriate pay. Then we would make sure that, look at how this doesn't happen in the future.
Okay, thank you.
IT staff receive an unusually high number of reports from faculty and staff who cannot access their employee accounts. Staff members see error messages that their credentials are invalid or their account no longer exists in the system.
I think we've been hacked.
Well, while this is going on, I'm out in the community, meeting with community leaders, talking to them about the state funding formula and how it affects our district salaries and our benefit schedules and hopefully we can make some positive changes in the future in public education so that we can more appropriately pay our hard-working staff.
And so today, I have been off the grid because I'm actually doing my real job and I have meetings all day long, I have lunch scheduled with a client, but my email is just blowing up because I have all these unhappy people that did not get paid and I just cannot manage it because I've got to do my job. I mean, and these emails, and I didn't get any heads up from our superintendent that this was going to happen and, you know, it would have been nice to have that so I wouldn't get all of these emails while I'm really trying to do my real job.
Well, I'm super excited because, I know I am always excited. This is the perfect job for me because I just found out there's this incredible grant opportunity to, oh yeah, to get drones for the district and I know the students are going to be thrilled with this new technology and it is certainly going to advance our school system and our capabilities so that we're going to be able to have trained top talent for our state. So I'm really excited. I hope that the communications director can push this out. I want to talk to her about this because this is a really exciting opportunity.
It's pretty unique to have an aerospace engineering class.
It really is.
I'm currently in California, attending the National Public Relations Association's conference, which is good because I have a crisis communication plan and a public relations response toolkit specifically about cybersecurity. So I'm able to see what other districts, other companies, other different entities handle these sorts of things. Although I am hoping that nobody wakes me up at Pacific time because there is a fog delay in Carmel or Simulation City.
How will you be educating the rest of the team on what you learned from this conference?
So at our weekly meetings that we have with everyone, exactly, the exact team, I'll make sure I'll be sharing everything.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Ms. Curriculum Director.
Yes.
I would assume that you are going to work with the network administrator with the use of those drones to ensure that no information and pictures taken or videos taken would be shared in the wrong hands.
Oh.
Do drones do that?
Somebody please fire her.
Yeah, where's an HR person who need it?
That's a great idea.
I, myself, I am very busy finalizing the installation, the HVAC, we finalized the bid, the board approved it and the vendor is going to be coming in this weekend, hopefully, this weekend so that we are not disruptive to our students and staff needing, heating.
Or cooling, it is.
Or cooling.
August, start of school.
Oh, that's right.
All right, so with that information then, would you guys take any other actions based off of that? Okay, very good. Let's go to the next page, day here. Go ahead and open up day 46.
After the students left, I hear from staff members that they can no longer access their school emails, curriculum materials and student grades on their local drives or the online school platform. In the hallway, you can just hear the hallways are buzzing about how we've been hacked.
Oh my gosh, I think I need to go straight to the superintendent, I am not sure what to do. I just got a message that says my, all my data is been hacked and they want $350,000 in Bitcoin so that my files will be returned. I'm not sure what to do, they want me to submit this money in my Apple Wallet within the next 96 hours or everything will be posted for sale. Oh my God, I don't know what to do. I think I should go to the superintendent. I don't know though, for sure. I'm not sure what our protocol is. Let me look through our handbook.
Well, I'm sitting here and I can't seem to identify the issue with staff accounts. Gather your team to get some additional eyes on the problem. Your administrative assistant orders lunch in as you haven't left your desk all day. At 3:00 PM, you receive a call from the curriculum director.
Guess what?
You got a problem.
Well, the superintendent directed me to immediately call you, so it's actually 3:05.
Well, I'm getting ready to call you as well because I have been documenting this new HVAC equipment that's been delivered to be installed this weekend, but now I can't access anything.
So everyone knows I'm at lunch right now. I'm taking a late lunch, so.
It's a very late lunch.
I'm still in California.
And I've been meeting...
It's a good conference.
Great.
I've been meeting with the teachers association all day and I get back to my office at 4:00 PM and I noticed that I have about 35 voicemails and well over 200 emails that I'm coming to.
Yep, and so do I. I've, my phone is lit up with messages and I'm trying to figure out how we're going to use the curriculum director's salary to pay the $350,000.
I have no emails.
So I, I've just been really excited to hear about the curriculum director's grant and so I've reached out to a colleague in the field to see if this person might be interested in partnering with the school because I think this drone idea is just absolutely fabulous.
It's low priority, I'm sorry, school board president.
Ms. HR, just remember who your boss is.
Maybe you could requisition some records on all the other school districts in the country that have drones and how they did it and all the districts that don't have drones and how they shared in national rankings and make sure that we have it for the next meeting. And make sure you have it for the next meeting.
Well, you know, I'm just reaching out to my friend to see if they want to partner with us. I'm not going to do all of that legwork. I'm still busy working on the eclipse. I mean, hasn't happened yet, so.
Well, I appreciate the conversation on the drones, it looks like we have a major issue here.
Thank you.
All righty, so then with that, we'll go ahead and head on over to day 47.
So I call together the executive team for an all-hands-on-deck meeting to discuss next step, identify what the issue is and we're going to collaborate together and go step by step in how we can rectify this issue.
I can finally confirm that I have been told with, from IT that there has been an incident and I can work on communicating that we're working to solve the problem as soon as possible. I also mentioned not to use the word breach in any of the information and I promptly show all of the pre-work that I've had waiting, enable of our crisis communication plan regarding this, our response toolkit, templates for emails to staff and parents and family in the community, if anyone would have heard me explain all this in prior meetings.
So I did just get a call from our superintendent about the issues that we've been having in the district.
in the district, and he shared this information and the status of where we're at. And it was a very thorough report, thanks to the communications person. But talked about next steps, and so I will inform all of the other board members to make sure that they are aware of what's going on in our district.
I need to talk to Principal McMichael because I just received word that.
You're out of order.
She said we don't have to go in order. That a classroom of students, their parents and guardians have received an email with everybody's grades from the entire class, and the memo of the email says worst teacher ever. So this is going to be extremely embarrassing for the district.
I hear you, but I'm getting a lot of calls from grumpy staff such as a board president that doesn't understand how this is a top priority, and a communications director that spends 90% of her time taking pictures, and a network administrator who's always on vacation. They're upset because they got to change their passwords for the system. I'm like, what is wrong with the people we've hired or voted for?
And I'm getting phone calls because the staff in the high school, the HVAC that we currently have can't be replaced, and now the classrooms are getting hotter and hotter. It's August, and they, the custodians are saying they can't control the temperature, and I don't know what, we may have to send students home.
Well, and I've had some parents and guardians that have received an email from their students' teachers with an attachment that includes the grades of every student in their class and the message, worst teacher ever.
So we're, we're going to talk about this.
In the meantime, I'm doing some actual work here. I'm working with my staff, reinforcing, reinforcing password recess on all affected staff members so that the problem will soon be behind us.
Well, you're why I'm getting all these messages, then.
Well.
So people are unhappy that the network administrators made them change their passwords.
They're never happy with the IT people.
You should have put in the message, don't contact the HR director, just change your password.
I can do that kind of thing.
I'd really like to speak to you, Communications Director Browning, about the possibility of putting out some sort of a statement that there has been a data incident at, in the school system, and that some of these things are happening so that it just gives people advanced warning. Transparency is so important.
And it's fantastic because I've already written that. Since we already have a pre-established crisis communication plan, in the moment, there's lots of things going on. So if we're prepared as a district and have templates ready and everything ready to go, I can focus on what is needed at the time and not have to worry about drafting a pre-approved or an email.
Could you also send an email to high school families, letting them know that, because their students have probably already texted their parents and said it's really hot, it's getting hotter, to let the families know what's going on?
Absolutely. They're going to go, they're going to get a text message to check their email, and they'll probably get a prerecorded phone call, letting them know that more information is available.
This may be a great time to propose a facilities referendum.
Interesting idea.
All right, very good. All right, so with that, we'll go ahead and open up our panels for day forty-eight.
I have some bad news. I just got a report that the hacker group Morning Avengers announces that they've taken control of our high school in a social media post, and they demand an additional $250,000 in Bitcoin. Didn't you pay them? Your 350?
Nobody made that suggestion, no way.
The attackers publish a sample of exfiltrated student data from your school on a hacker forum. They also claim that they will release more data every four hours until the ransom is paid.
But our referendum did not pass, and so we don't have.
Well, I don't think we should negotiate with these people, anyway.
I think what maybe our network administrator might have some ideas on what we should do.
Well, I'm still having lunch, thinking about things, but I do get a report. Yeah, I get a report that the hacker group called Morning Avengers announces they have taken control of our high school social media post, and they are demanding an additional $250,000 in Bitcoin. The attackers publish a sample of exfiltrated student data from your school on a hacker forum. They also claim they will release more data every four hours.
So what are you going to do? What are you going to do to guide our team?
Well, I'm, I, let me have my lunch, let me finish my lunch.
Well, while, while you're on lunch, we're getting all kinds of phone calls from high school parents saying that the, these hackers have posted a screenshot with student names, telephone numbers, and addresses from our high school.
So that's where our communications director comes in great, because I am already following along with hashtag #schoolhacked and making sure that all the information that's shared on there, the biggest thing is that we can combat misinformation. So as, from the district scandal, I'm making sure that I'm posting of, you know, kind of what our current plan is that we've already agreed on, that we've already worked with. Parents are also saying that they're going to go to law enforcement, but because we already have such a great relationship with the Assimilation Police Department, they're already very well aware and involved.
I'm going to start a confidential search for a backfill for the network administrator and in tandem, in tandem, I wonder if we need to send some kind of communication to our employees about keeping an eye on their accounts to make sure there's nothing, you know, nefarious happening with their money.
And because this has happened to other school districts in the area, we've also connected with the FBI who assisted those school districts, and they are advising us on whether or not we pay this ransom and what steps to take next. And so we're going to keep the executive leadership team abreast about what's going on and ensure that we are moving forward with our communications plan while also working with the FBI to come up with a solution.
I've been able to communicate with the teachers so that they recognize what's going on because of the communications I've received, so that they're aware that students' portals have been hacked and that their homework's being deleted or being sent in multiple times. That way, we can, the teachers can then convey that to the kids, because we know as a top-ranked school district, our kids take their grades very seriously. And then I'm also thinking that I'm going to ask Katie to please send out something to the families so they can be aware too. Because when parents go in and check Canvas for their homework assignments and they see that they're not there, it's probably going to cause a lot of concern and phone calls to Principal McMichael.
And I also want to thank the curriculum director because we don't have access to our systems and to technology and Wi-Fi and all these pieces. She has put together a phenomenal plan for instruction in the classroom. Just going back to when we didn't have technology, she's put that plan together so students continue to learn. Even though it is hot, we brought some water in to, you know, ensure that our students are feeling comfortable.
I found some fans, I found some industrial fans as well.
We have fans, and so the day is continuing while we work through this very important situation.
I'm so proud to be part of this team. Thank you for that recognition. It really means a lot.
Alright.
Students report that their upcoming homework assignments have been deleted from their online drive. Teachers also notice students submitting multiple identical copies of their homework assignments.
Sounds like a mess.
It's very hot.
It's hot.
No water and fans.
Yeah. So it looks like we're ready for our last day.
Ready for our last day, day forty-nine.
It's about spring break, so.
Well, I'm doing what IT people do. I've shut the network down, and I'm restoring the system to the last good backup. And along with our superintendent has said, we are starting to collect hard copy documents and getting ready to figure out how we're going to go forward. And we are working with the FBI and the CISA to help identify the perpetrator and make sure that justice prevails.
A little too late.
Well, fortunately, the hackers got into our backup system, but we have a backup to the backup, so we were able to preserve everything right before the hacking occurred.
Would you be interested in a network administrator role?
Well, the network administrator did keep me posted on everything, so that's what I'm going to do right now.
I, I did need to talk to you, I think it's come time that we, we call the school day at the high school, that we are not able to get the HVAC system up and running quite yet, and it's getting just too hot for our staff and students.
What's the current temperature of the building?
Ninety-six.
Well, then, yes, we definitely need to consider that, thank you.
And I'm working to communicate all parties, first our staff members so that they're aware, and then our parents, making sure that the news outlets have the same information. I'm only posting information as directed from our superintendent, making sure that all people are on the same page, that information isn't being shared too prematurely or too late at the same time.
So since we won't have learning through this day, since we're going to go ahead and wrap the school day early, we will likely have to add a calendar day at the end of the school year, and will our teacher comp, our teacher contract allow for adding that additional day at the end of the school year?
Well, fortunately, we're a high-performing district, so with the Department of Education, we are able to apply for a waiver so that we don't have to make that day up. But we will get with the curriculum director to ensure that any mislearning, we can make that up with the remaining days we have.
Okay, that will help. I'm also working with our legal team to develop an FAQ that could address any questions that staff has.
Excellent, thank you.
And I know this has been super challenging, but I was wondering if you could come into the middle schools. I know that the high school's closing early today, but middle schools, while it's been challenging, it really is incredible to see the learning that's going on with, you know, limited technology. And I think it would be a great way of pushing out some communications that will make everyone feel good in light of all these problems.
I think there's definitely a balance of sharing good news at the same time that there's bad things happening also.
Well, at the high school, we've been working with our teachers and staff to find ways to teach without having computer access. We found an old memory graph machine.
Projector. Slideshow.
And real, real tape.
Real live books.
And kids are actually talking to one another and looking each other in the eye.
No, they're not doing this bad. Let's not get freaked out.
We're going back to the Stone Age.
Now, I, I know that we're trying to share just the right amount of communication, but my phone and my email, well, not my email, it was a shutdown, my phone has been ringing off the hook. I have parents and community members that have been calling, demanding answers. They feel like we are not communicating enough for the public, they don't know what's going on, they want to know what's going on with the recent events. So I think it's probably time that we make, make a public statement.
Absolutely, and so we're going to do that, we're going to continue to do that. Also, what I appreciate about the team is that everyone comes together in times of crisis, and we work together and we problem solve together, we communicate on a high level, which is very important. So I want to thank the bus drivers, because we had to call them in early to get our high school students home, and then they ran their regular routes as well. So although this is a crisis, we're working with many different departments. We do appreciate the work of our current staff, and we're going to continue to communicate with our parents and our stakeholders. And then, we're going to ensure we get better in the future and that this does not happen again, and we're going to develop a plan so that we don't see this issue in the future.
Yeah, and I think, too, we need to come back and revisit our policies and look at our strategic plan and really come in and make sure that our policies are aligned for our cybersecurity so in the future, this is not, everybody's aware of what those are, we can do professional development, and we can make sure that everybody knows their jobs, and they're not always out to lunch, and they're doing what they need to do for our policies.
And I think as a communication director, I'm just so thankful that the board and some kind of have communication expectations, so that even during times of crisis, they're continuing to direct parents back to the superintendent, making sure that communication is only coming from the communication director. And so I think that that's really great, is even if you have things written down before, if you don't follow them, then it's not going to make any difference. So just like our crisis communication plan that I had that nobody knew about, and my toolkit available, you need to make sure that people are educated on resources if you have them, so that when there's time of crisis, that people continue to use them.
I have to give a shout out to the facilities and custodial staff because they, from across the district, came to the high school, really worked to try to cool down the building and brought in water, brought in fans, in an attempt to make sure that we can still keep school in session today. Unfortunately, that didn't work out, but they, they did a really great job of jumping into action immediately.
Very good.
And I'm, I'm working with my replacement. We're, we're going to do, yeah, after, after lunch, but now we're going to look at, do a postmortem on, on technically what was the back door, how did this get in? Was it the fish? Was it some other kind of network vulnerability? And work with the FBI and CISA, try to figure out how we're going to block that from, from happening again, as well as understanding the, the business restoration process, make sure that we've got that. And it was good to have a manual method to keep things going and.
Very good. So with the last five days, what went well out of that?
Communication.
Absolutely. Absolutely. That's one thing that I think I had mentioned here, I, I've noticed it on this side, it's a community effort. And the fact that we're all communicating with one another throughout this crisis, again, making something better out of that, so very good. What do you think could be improved?
Communication.
Sharing mitigation plans, like, did we know about her, her whole plan that she has for crisis?
Excellent, very good. So with that, too, if there were to be a cyber incident, who would be the first one that we would reach out to contact?
Staff.
All heading in the right direction, but it would be Cybersecurity Insurance. That would be the first company that we would reach out for. And then from there, we would go through FBI, and any communication would then henceforth be from them through us.
So the network administrator would contact them or the super?
Absolutely, or the disaster recovery plan that we would have set. And why wouldn't we ever use the term breach?
I told you not to use that.
Because it scares people?
Absolutely. Absolutely. So without knowing the full extent of the incident that has occurred, legality is essentially the easiest answer for that. We want to make sure that the FBI, our cyber security, cybersecurity insurance has had a chance to thoroughly review this incident, and then therefore, if they state that it has been a breach, then they'll, them come down from us from that, in that regard. So, okay, well, that's our simulation there, so lots of fun.
We're going to stay right here for just a few minutes and wrap up with a few high-level questions.
Absolutely, because again, we can't necessarily just say that this is the way it is, no, not, not the way that we have it here, because this is very much in line with our district's strategic plan. And again, we have a cybersecurity plan, and then the, we'll go into our trusted learning environment as well, too. So first, with cybersecurity, we have a couple of things in place that would have obviously prevented this from happening back in day one. So first, we partner with multiple government and national entities, just so that we could be, become aware of the latest trends and developments with cybersecurity. Those groups include CISA, MSI SAC, and K-12-6. So keeping us informed on this is critical because we need to know how to detect future vulnerabilities, and we know how to go ahead and stop them from even occurring right from the start. And with our poor network admin being out for two weeks, we would notice that redundancy would have helped us out tremendously in this case. We like to cross-train our staff on this. It doesn't just go to one individual, it goes to a team of folks here. So we're always keeping an eye on the glass. We do cybersecurity audits as well. Back in March of this year, we had invited Purdue's CyberTap team into our environment so they could go ahead and conduct some scanning, and they did find some improvement, or areas for improvement, which we have already settled. So with that, we are also planning for future cybersecurity audits through different universities here from Indiana. Vulnerability scanning is, again, that's something that's going to be something very important. We have automated scanning going on in the background basically every time here at Carmel Clay Schools, and every week, we have a vulnerability report that gets sent out to our staff members and our team members. That those vulnerabilities, if any, are found, are documented in our ticketing system, and we are addressed on a very quick basis. Data backups, that would help us out in this case. So, yes, we do have very, very automated and well-checked data backups, and we do implement multiple copies of those backups, including as well as one off-site, as our superintendent duly noted in the conversation that we just had. But certainly, and definitely not the least, staff training. So I'm sure most of you have seen your phishing emails, and yes, that is not meant to be a gotcha, that is meant to have live, live-action training for recognizing and reporting phishing. So that's the most common vector for cybersecurity incidents, which is like the one that we occurred right now. And why it took so long for that to happen, as you notice, it went from day one to day forties. A lot of times when those cybersecurity, or those bad actors, they get those credentials, they like to sit and build persistence on a network. They like to get the next step up so they can go ahead and take over. they like to sit and build persistence on a network. They like to get the next step up so they can go ahead and take over. And that's what more likely occurred in this case. So we're building resilience with our, our phishing detection and response. And we're also incorporating this in mandatory back-to-school training and also we're making it fun with our Inside Man documentaries too. So.
I have a question.
Yes.
So on, a couple of us said in our comments that we were unavailable through email. So if there was a breach or something serious rather than just a few phishing emails, is there another way that we contact people so that we can alert them if something major happens? If there are applications, not checking emails via protocols that you have to check your emails?
Absolutely. Well, again, like I said, like there with redundancy, again, we have multiple people here that are keeping eyes on the glass. So that if you were to report that to anybody, would that be anybody in IT, our ticketing system, anything along those lines, we would find it and we would catch it.
What about just staff people?
Oh, staff.
If staff was out, I mean, they probably wouldn't be because, oh, so depending on what station you are, but typically I would imagine teachers aren't gone for two weeks. But if somebody was gone for two weeks or even a week and they weren't looking at emails and a major catastrophe had happened where we could prob, maybe prevent, prevent further damage, is there an alternate way of contacting people?
Yes, I can speak to that. So we have the school messenger communication system within the district which allows us to make an automated phone call to any member of the staff who would need to be notified as well as parents in the community about that event.
Very good. So with that, we can go down to our student data privacy.
Yeah, so a second part of our strategic plan when it comes to enhanced operations is this trusted learning environment and our student data privacy work. And we have made this a key component of our digital safety, looking at vendors, making sure that vendors that we share student data with are vetted, that we have contracts with them in place that say what they can do with the data, what data they have access to, what happens when we're no longer partnering with that particular vendor? How do we get rid of? How do, how does our data get out of their system? Uh, and so it is with great pleasure that I am able to announce that we have earned the trusted learning environment. And the official press release will go out tomorrow. COSIN, the organization behind the trusted learning environment, is gonna make that press release and then Emily has some communications that will go out as well. Oh dear, what are you doing?
A little something that we wanna recognize, Kate, for all the work of the trusted learning environment.
It's a team effort. So I'll share these flowers with you.
It is absolutely a team effort, but without Kate's dedication and countless hours that she put into the research and the requirements and gathering all of the documentation, it would not have been obtainable for us to earn this award so quickly. And we know the work isn't done and Kate has lots of plans to keep us getting better and better at the trusted learning environment. But we certainly are proud of all that she has helped us to accomplish.
So yes, I see this as the first step in a, in a long process because you'll notice that it's valid until October 2025. This is a two-year, basically endorsement. So in two years, we'll reapply and the committee will be expecting to see continued improvements and growth in the areas. We did get a rubric of feedback on our application with some areas that we can look at and ways that we can continue to improve. But it is a high honor. There aren't many school districts in the nation that have achieved this, so.
About how many, Kate, in the nation?
Twenty-five, thirty. They don't always post them on the website, so it's not always clear, but it is, it is not many.
She knew that.
Right there. So yes, and that's a part of our work as a community. And now what we wanna challenge you is how you can help us support our efforts.
So as you can see, no doubt, the district needs to have a strong cybersecurity posture. And, but these measures can only go so far because again, this ultimately will end up on the people, the community, as you all noticed, as with your communication. And we're in the people business. So in honor of Digital Safety Month, we wanted to recommend, or show what CISA recommends for easy items that we can implement here at Carmel Clay Schools and also at home. As long as you can apply these to your digital life, then we can all be, the community a safer place. Those four items right here will be enabling multi-factor authentication, using strong passwords, recognizing and reporting phishing, which is what we tried to mention here tonight, and updating your software to get those vulnerabilities out of here. So with that, we'll leave you with a nice quote.
So a continuing drumbeat of cyber intrusions is threatening the nation's ability to educate our children while also placing personal information and school data at risk. Leaders must establish and reinforce a cybersecure culture. Information technology and cybersecurity personnel cannot bear the burden alone. So we thank you for your support of our digital safety initiatives and we look forward to continued participation in growing our culture of digital safety here at Carmel Clay Schools.
Thank you guys so much. I think one of this, I love the simulation, the exercise. It was very hard. All these teenagers were cringy because I knew it was not Carmel Clay Schools. All of the situations that were happening, I knew that we had better and better plans. And you guys have done a great job of educating the board in the past of all the great things that we're doing. So, so congratulations on tonight. Congratulations on that certi, that certificate, the host certification?
Seal, the trusted learning environment seal.
That, um, that multi-year effort, I mean, it's been a long time. So congratulations on that. So we're gonna go ahead and move on to, um, the, our reports section of the evening. We'll, we'll go ahead and stand on here.
All right. So for today's superintendent's report, we hope everyone is registered and ready to go and join us for our fifteenth annual Ghost and Goblins race this Saturday. It's not too late to register and to join. If you've never been, it is an amazing time. Uh, there are group costumes, a ton of CCS students and staff. And the best part is that all of the proceeds benefit the Carmel Education Foundation, which ultimately benefit our students and our schools. So you can head to ghostandgoblinsrun.com to get all signed up. And it's been another special fall sports season for Carmel High School. We had our first unified flag football state championship. And so, and it's also our first unified title for Carmel High School with the IHSA. Um, I also wanna give a big shout out to our unified cheer team as well, who was at the championship games and many other games who pumped up Greyhound Nation. So we're very excited about that first in Carmel Clay Schools. Girls' state golf champions, back-to-back, which is very, very exciting. We're excited about that. Boys' tennis state championship, the seventh in the last eight years. Um, and this marks Carmel's one-hundred-and-seventy-third, um, IHSA team state championships. And then Carmel has one-hundred-and-ninety total state championships in twenty-eight varsity sports. So wanted to share that. In addition, congratulations to Jonathan Yang, um, being named the state mental attitude award winner in tennis. Johnny boasts a four-point-seven-four GPA and he also has taken or is currently taking forty-nine honors, AP, IB, ACP classes as part and also being our number one singles player on the tennis team. So congratulations to him. And this is our sixty-eighth mental attitude award winner or, uh, for Carmel High School. Pretty incredible numbers. Um, boys and girls were sectional champions in soccer. Um, and then boys cross-country were sectional champions. They are moving on to regionals. Girls cross-country were sectional champion runner-up and they're heading to regionals. And then congratulations to our girls volleyball team on a great season and good luck to football. Um, next Friday versus Westfield and that is at the Carmel High School Stadium. So that'll be the first round of sectionals. Have a marching band update real quick. So they are winning everything right now and doing phenomenally. Uh, they won the Brownsburg Invitational, the Bands of America Louisville Regional. Um, they won the Center Grove Invitational and they're also winning awards for best music, visual, general effect. Uh, twenty-seventh regional championship for our marching Greyhounds. And so they move on to super regionals, I believe, this weekend at Lucas Oil. So we wish them the best. And I'd also wanna congratulate all of our performing arts, uh, um, at the middle school and at the high school for outstanding concerts this fall. And thank you for all of their hard work. And finally, the bell ringer for tonight has to be a reminder to go out and vote. So now through October twenty-fifth, except on Sundays, at the Hamilton County Fairgrounds and the Judicial Center are open for all county residents. Then starting next Wednesday, Carmel residents can head to Founder's Park on the east side and then the Jill Pearlman Pavilion on the west side to vote. Uh, if you have any questions about the operating referendum, be sure to head to our website and search referendum. And if you still have questions, please do not hesitate to email us directly at referendum@ccs.k12.in.us. It's important for all residents and taxpayers to have accurate information. And with that, that concludes this evening's superintendent's report and we wish Dr. B. a very speedy recovery from his fall break. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, our next board meeting is October thirtieth and I will now take a motion to adjourn. Second, all those in favor, meeting adjourned. Thank you.